And welcome to our first ever Illinois PTA Town Hall meeting. So obviously, we're doing things a little differently with in light of the pandemic last year and COVID. So we're all meeting virtually. We wish we could be together and really look forward to the opportunity in the future to be able to come back together. And it's great to see everybody on the call tonight. You don't know who I am. My name is Kristin Kramer and I'm currently your PTA president. And I'll be presiding over this evening's informational Town Hall meeting. We hope you've enjoyed the video. If you were able to join us a little bit in advance, we're playing a little bit of video from National PTA of just the value and importance of PTA. So out of concern and safety for our stakeholders, Illinois PTA State Convention, the PTA Board of Directors made the decision, of course, early on, to host our state convention virtually. Therefore, we're hosting tonight's Town Hall meeting to provide an opportunity for delegates to ask questions on the action items and understand the process that we'll be utilizing to conduct the business during general sessions. Action items include proposed bylaw amendments, the proposed 2021 to 22 budget resolutions, which met the criteria for resolutions, and then the Board Development and Nominating Committee report. These were all sent to delegates registered for convention as well as listed on our website. At this time, I would like to introduce Anna Westlich, who was our parliamentarian, past Illinois PTA president and past National PTA president, as an explanation of the process that we will be utilizing during general sessions.
Thank you, Kristin. We will be using two documents that will help to govern what we're doing. So in the program book, there is listed the convention rules, which has some of the procedures that we will be following. Many of the procedures, particularly about elections, were required of us by the company that we're working with that set up our elections. So there's a very little flexibility. But there is an opportunity for us to file some parliamentary procedures, even though we're meeting virtually. And again, I ask of you to be patient. This is a new experience for many of us to do a virtual convention. And so there's going to probably be a couple of hiccups along the way. And so please, please bear with us. Even though our chat box is not open this evening, there is a reactions button at the bottom of your screen. If you have an apple, it may be at the top of your screen. But if you all want to try it, if you click on the reactions button, you will see a command that says raise hand. And if everybody clicks on it, you should see your hand raised. We're getting there. Almost everybody's got their hand up. Okay, we will use this feature tonight, and we will be using it at times throughout the convention proceedings. So I thought it would be a good idea to practice that tonight. Now, everybody who has their hand raised can go back to the reaction button, click on lower hand, and it disappears. Now, if you wish to support something that's going on, then you can do the thumbs up. And there might be an occasion for you to do that.
Mine only, my reaction button only shows thumbs up and a hand clap. It doesn't show a hand up.
Doesn't show a hand raised?
Hand raised, no.
Okay. You may have that on the participants.
Okay.
If you look at the bottom of participants, it might be there. Okay. Now, if you saw a thumbs up and if you saw a raised hand and you saw your applause, all those little buttons, and you also have a yes and a no button, you might be directed to do those. But please don't play with our buttons unless we are asked to. So happy faces, celebration, well, celebrations, maybe we will at the end. What do you think, Kristin? But otherwise, you know, we're going to keep to a minimum of using those buttons that don't pertain to the business we're conducting. So let me go over the parliamentary procedures with you first of all. If you wish to speak as a voting delegate, you will need to use your raise hand feature. And if all else fails, I think everybody's got a hand. So it looks a lot like the raise hand anyway. So if you don't have that, your raise hand will be recognized. And we will also direct you when it's time to lower your hand, whether it's the virtual icon or your real hand, okay? Those wishing to speak must provide their full names in their local PTA or council that they're representing, just as we do typically. For those of you who have been to our conventions before, we ask that you identify yourself. Voting delegates who intend to make a main motion will have to post their motion in writing in advance of the convention. We will not be taking any motions from the floor this year. No delegates shall speak for more than two minutes. There will be timers that will be watching your time. And you may speak no more than twice during any debatable motion or any motion that's on the floor. We're not going to be able to do very much debate this year. So your raise hand might be your only opportunity to raise a question or to speak to it. Total debate time for each main motion shall be no more than 10 minutes. And again, the clock will be timing us and will stop us when those 10 minutes have expired. All attendees must mute their microphone whenever they are not speaking. So children who are in our background, dogs who are barking, doorbells that are ringing, and I guess even cuckoo clacks that are cuckooing, we're going to try to keep to a minimum. There are several motions that are privileged that we will be allowing during the proceedings of the convention. And so I would want to just mention those briefly. There's the question of privilege. This is one where, when we're all together, people will say, it's too hot in here. It's too cold in here. I can't hear very well. Well, these are going to be changed just a little bit since we are doing this virtually. It's when we are concerned about the character integrity or motive of another individual, when we don't think someone has given a fair opportunity to speak or someone has brought something to our attention that is really not germane, there's a parliamentary term for you, that really relates to the subject at hand. Or where there is a personal comfort of participation. In other words, maybe somebody forgot to mute and you're hearing background noise. Or that you can't hear because someone is muted or there's a lot of static or the volume isn't loud enough. So those are the privileged motions that we'll be able to be taking. Also, there are point of order, which is a privileged motion as well. And that can be brought forward by a delegate. That's when, again, something is being discussed that isn't an agenda item that's currently been adopted. Or there's a question to the chair. Maybe you might be confused as to what we're voting on or what the item of business is. You can certainly raise a point of order and ask that question. When the question is for the right of an individual to speak, again, this is to make sure that whoever's addressing the chair is eligible to be a speaker. Or there's a matter of procedure or parliamentary procedure that there is a question about being followed. So those are all points of order. Also, a point of information will be allowed. And that again would be if you have a question of the chair that all of the delegates would have a concern about. You might again want an explanation of the motion or the pending motions. What is it that's being presented? What is the motion? And I didn't understand if there was an amendment or not. So those kinds of questions could be asked when there's a point of information. Also, if you're requesting clarification, that you might not have understood something clearly. In other words, you might not have heard an announcement. You might not have heard that it's time to go to a workshop or that it's time to take a break or whatever else. You can question the chair for that. Or again, as I mentioned before, the explanation of a pending motion. You can also ask for clarifying questions as a point of information to make sure that the announcements made are of concern to all the delegates. You might want to ask for a motion to be reread. Or you might request that a statement of the chair regarding the passage of rejection. In other words, if a motion was declared to have passed and you didn't hear that, you may ask the chair as a point of information to repeat the results of the election or the motion. And also for a request of the repeat of any vote counts. So that's your parliamentary 101 for this convention à la virtual. So we're all into learning through this convention. And thank you for participating in Town Hall tonight to get warmed up for what we'll be doing next week. End of my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Anna. During this year's convention, delegates will have the opportunity to elect our new leadership for the 2021 and 2022 term. I'd like to introduce Connie McElie, who will be giving the report of the nominating committee. She is representing the Board Development and Nominating Committee.
Board Development Nominating Committee places into nomination the following for the 21-2023 term. President-elect Greg Hobbs, Vice President of Field Operations Connie McElie, Vice President of Programs Alyssa Malloy, Secretary Peg Stalen, Treasurer, no nominee. The Board Development Nominating Committee slates for a State Board of Directors Representative Kristin Kramer and no nominee for the General Membership Representative. The bios of each candidate are available on the Illinois PTA website.
I know a number of the candidates are here on the call tonight. So if you can just take a minute and I'll kind of just read through the names one more time. And if you're on the call, if you can just go ahead and put yourself on, put your video on and wave to everyone so they can see you on the call tonight.
Greg Hobbs, Connie McElie, Alyssa Malloy, Peg Stalen, and Kristin Kramer.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you again. And thank you, Connie. So this year, because we do not have any candidates, any candidates in opposition, we will be conducting election via the poll through Zoom. We had planned to utilize associated voting, should we have had any contested elections. So we will be able, we will be holding our elections, given that we have, if we have a motion to conduct the voice by, the vote by voice, excuse me. So we will take additional nominations made from the floor if the prerequisite prior notice for such nominations have been received. And we did have a candidate who has submitted their nomination for the Office of Treasurer. And he is on the call tonight, too. So that was Jim Sklina. He would like to wave as well.
Hello.
So since, if we do have a motion during the meeting to conduct the vote by voice, the polls will be open during, during the general session and we will not be sending out notification through the associated voting channels. For some reason, we need to do so. The polls will be open from Thursday, April 22nd at 9:00 PM. And we'll close it on Friday at April 23rd. Each credential candidate must have registered to attend the convention by 6:00 PM on April 6th and pay all registration fees. And then each credential delegate will receive an email containing their instructions of the voting process, a new link, and a link to view candidate information. Election results would be announced at General Session 2 on Saturday, April 24th. Again, since we only have one candidate for each position, we will likely not be utilizing this process. And nominations will be made during General Session 1. And election will occur at that time. So thank you to Connie again for reporting the report of the nominating committee. I'd like to now introduce Carolyn McCarty, our president-elect, who will introduce our resolutions.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Resolutions are a way for us to identify issues and, and, and work towards solutions for our children. And this year, we are, we've had two units from across the state that have submitted resolutions that meet our criteria statewide in scope, meeting our purposes and our, and work towards furthering the mission of PTA. The first resolution tonight is health care for children in the foster care system. This has been a change of the way families, Department of Family and Children, I'm sorry, Department of Children and Family Services provide health care for our children that are in foster care. And I do, we, I don't know if Andy's on the call or not. I didn't, I didn't admit him to the call, but he may be with us this evening and could answer questions in regards to this resolution. I will read the resolves real quick. "We resolve that the Illinois PTA and its constituent bodies disseminate information with respect to health care concerns for children in the Illinois foster care system. And be it further resolved that the Illinois PTA will work with other like-minded organizations to protect the health of children in foster care and former foster children. And be it further resolved that the Illinois PTA and its constituent bodies support legislation which ensures that children in the foster care system have access to health care without limiting health services or restricting the providers available to the children, which ensures that foster parents have adequate information and which would enhance coordination between all parties to a child's health care." This was submitted by Southside PTA in Champaign. And again, I don't know if Andy's on the, on the call, that he could answer any questions that you may have regarding this resolution. Having seen nobody raise their hand with a question, I will continue to the second resolution, which is child safe gun storage. This was, this started as a resolution that was put forward to the IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards, but it fell outside of their purview. And when we saw it, we went, well, this really does fall within our, our purview. And Hadley PTA in Glen Allen, is that correct, Kristin?
Yes, Hadley.
Hadley, sorry, Hadley PTA in Glen Allen. One of their members was a key participant or activist advocating for this to the school boards. And when it didn't get through the school board, she then reached out to her PTA and started working with her PTA along with Kristin to help lower the age from, currently it's at 18, to bring in the age, apparently it's a 14. And we want to bring the age up to 18 for safety, safety locks on guns with children in the home. The whereas statements regarding this, "Whereas the Illinois PTA and its constituent bodies disseminate information with respect to child gun safety, to safe gun storage so that they are inaccessible to children who are at risk of harming themselves or others. And be it further resolved that the Illinois PTA will work with other like-minded organizations to educate and raise awareness about child safe gun storage. And be it further resolved that the Illinois PTA and its constituent body support legislation which strengthens, strengthens child safe gun storage laws, requiring gun owners to store firearms, whether they are loaded or unloaded in securely locked containers by raising the age from 14 to 18. If a person under the age of 18 is likely to gain access to the weapon without permission. And further be it resolved that as the issues involved in connection with child safe gun store is a national issue, the Illinois PTA submit this resolution in the appropriate format to the National PTA for consideration by delegates to the 2022 National PTA Convention. And as I said, this was submitted by Hadley. And if anybody has any questions about it, Kristin would be more than happy to answer them. And I don't see any hands, Kristin. So I will turn this back over to you. These are, resolutions are wonderful. And I always encourage everyone to, you know, when you see an issue, that issue that's happening in your area could be an issue that's happening all around the state. This is a great opportunity for us to find solutions that help work towards obtaining our mission. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Carolyn, and Southside Elementary PTA and Hadley PTA. Thanks for bringing these issues to our attention for consideration. And as Carolyn said, resolutions are truly a way for us to be champions for children. So now I'm going to turn it back over to Connie McElie, who's going to present the proposed bylaws amendments and answer any questions.
The proposed bylaw amendments have been posted on the Illinois PTA website for a few weeks. So hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them. Amendments will be considered in two motions. The first motion will deal with all the cross-references within the bylaws, which are on the first page of the document. Cross-references means it refers to somewhere else or another area of the bylaws. The remaining proposed amendments, numbers 1 through 13, which start on page 2 of the document, will be considered in seriating, seriatum, meaning altogether. A delegate would have the opportunity to raise their hand to remove a specific amendment. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be...
I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you.
Carolyn, you're doing a great job of stalling.
I was trying to get my hand up there for Connie.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Dr. Palmer, Dr. Karen Palmer from Educational Village Keepers Community, PTSA. Where did you say this information is?
It's all available on the website, on the Illinois PTA website, under the convention, general session, action items.
I wasn't able to access that today. And Ashton said that she was doing work on it.
Yes, Ashton was doing some updates on some areas of the convention page. So it was down for some time this afternoon, but it is back up.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, that our delegates who are attending for the first time know that in case they too had that same issue. But you're saying everything is operative now?
Yes, so it was up there, it's been up there for several weeks. So she just reorganized it.
I was not aware of it being up for several weeks. So that's why I'm, now that it's been made clear for tonight, I'm making sure, because I tried to access that website and was unable to do so. So that's why I'm asking now, is it up and running? And I wanted to make sure that the new delegates that are in attendance are understanding.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Palmer. So if you go to the Illinois PTA website and visit the convention, if you go onto the events, scroll across the top and go over to the events, and then click on Convention 2021. On the right-hand side, you'll see several folders called Welcome, Schedule, Mini Keynote, Speakers, Workshop, General Session 1 and General Session 2. If you open General Session 1, that will show you the orders of business. And that was what, what Ashton was making a little bit clearer today on the website. And that's why it was down for a little while today. And when you open that up, you'll see the Parliament, the order of the business. And then links to each order of the business will display on that page. Then if you open up General Session 2, you'll see again the agenda there. And then there'll be links to open up the different aspects that'll be presented during that general session as well.
We couldn't share screen this, no?
Excuse me?
You cannot share screen that, no?
We are, right now, we're in, we're doing this presentation. So we can go back to that at the end if folks would like to see that.
I would like to at the end. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Palmer.
Thank you, Chris.
Kristin Peg has her hand up.
Okay. Thank you, Connie. Peg?
I just wanted to share that everything that is on the convention site, Dr. Palmer, now under convention, is exactly what's going to appear for the convention program book. We wanted to provide this ahead of time so that everybody had an opportunity to see it before we came to convention and had the opportunity to review everything. And please, if you have questions, I would be happy to answer any of them regarding the program.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Regarding... Is it regarding the website or?
Regarding what we're talking about now. It was mentioned a couple of times, the program book.
The program, yes, we will have a program book that will be sent to, that each delegate will have access to.
Okay, we don't have that now.
Like we would, no. It's just like when we have, when you attend the in-person convention and we give you a program book, we will have the same thing available, but in a virtual plan for you.
What way will that be sent to us? That'll be sent to us via US mail or email or how?
Kristin, you're muted.
You're muted, Kristin.
Thank you. Basically, what you're seeing here tonight is what is in the convention book, right? With some additional information, like as far as our award recipients as well. So as soon as that is available, it will not be sent out by mail. It will be, it's, it will be in a virtual platform, like to you.
Madam President.
Yes, Peg?
I just want to clarify that. I was in communication with the office today. We felt that it is easier for all of the delegates and everybody to put the, all the convention information for those two days on the website. And it's exactly like you're going to see it on the website now so that you can all see it in advance instead of waiting and sending out a program book later. So everything you're going to need is right available. So everything you're going to need is right available as of tonight when Ashton put it up for us all. And then the day of convention, as you see here on the screen share that Kristen is doing, they've put the convention items in a PDF. We'll be doing that for convention as well so that it's an easier flow for everybody. I hope that helped answer your question.
Jim has his hand up.
Jim Skleen there?
I just wanted to clarify for myself and for everyone else on this call and make sure that so tonight is the night that everyone here should be asking questions about these amendments and proposals and things. And that since we have such a limited time at convention itself, that's not the time to bring up those questions that we have. That's what tonight is for. And sort of a second part of that is say there's someone here tonight that shares this document or has questions between now and the start of convention. If they were to share that with somebody else or be discussing it with someone else, who would they reach out to or email if they had a question between now and the actual convention start? Just, just to save us a lot of time during those convention sessions because I know it's going to be quick. Did that make sense?
Kristen, I think we lost you. There you are.
Yeah, it froze while Jim was talking, so. So if you have any questions, you would send them through info@illinoispta.org and then we'll get those to the right individual. Whoever, if it's a resolutions question, obviously it'll go to the individual that will respond regarding resolutions. If it's about budget, it's about bylaws, we'll then disseminate that to the appropriate individual to respond to it. So if you do have any questions regarding something that you saw tonight and thought about it afterwards, please send that to info@illinoispta.org.
Angie Para has her hand up.
Thanks, I was just going to go to her next. Angelica Para.
Thank you, Kristen and Carolyn. So I was noticing that we're eliminating the scholarship program and I guess we're creating this endowment fund. And I just noticed right now that the State Board of Directors shall have authority to transfer excess money to the endowment fund and shall stipulate the conditions under which these funds may be dispersed. What kind of conditions are we stipulating? I mean, can we get more details on that? Since we're deleting the scholarship program?
What, what this last amendment, the endowment fund is, is as you said, we used to have a scholarship program which scholarship funds went into. And the current bylaws read, you know, the money from that. So what we're doing is the endowment fund, the money's left from the scholarship fund and stuff will go into the endowment fund itself instead of the way it currently reads, it could go scholarship fund or endowment fund. The, the way it currently read is contributions, profits from the sales securities, interest from the sales securities, and entrance from the endowment fund shall be placed in the endowment or scholarship funds of the Illinois PTA at the discretion of the State Board of Directors. So what we did was we eliminated the scholarship fund and now it will all go into the endowment fund.
And, okay, just a follow-up question then, what does the endowment fund do for the state? Because I didn't even know we had one.
The endowment fund, how, I mean, it's, it's kind of like a savings would be an easy way. I don't know if Alyssa would like to explain it more, but it's more like a savings.
Okay.
That can be used for emergencies.
So it's a savings that is used for emergencies?
Yes, and it's an account that we've had for quite some time. Barb Quinn, you have any idea how long we've had the, or Anna? Peg?
The endowment fund has been around at least since the eighties. And there's very specific language in the trust that set up the endowment fund as to how the funds can be spent. The only money that can be taken out of the endowment fund without a vote of the entire board is the interest that it generates.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Hello, Kristen. I just wanted to know, what positions did you say were open with no nominees? What positions were they?
The only position that was not, did not have a slated candidate was treasurer and we received a nomination for that position prior to the notification period that was necessary. So there isn't, there will be no position that remains open.
Because.
It was the treasurer position.
Because it was another one that you didn't have any nominees for and that was the one that I was asking about.
Oh, oh, you're, okay, when you said position, I was assuming you meant the officer positions. The other positions that you're referring to are for the Board Development and Nominating Committee.
Okay. Okay. And you have something that says anything about the duties and responsibilities of those?
Yes, all of that information is available on the website as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The Board Development and Nominating Committee, for those who are not familiar, their responsibility, their charge is to vet and find candidates for, in the election year of officers, you know, the officer positions and then the Board of Development and Nominating Committee members and then in other, and also some of our non-voting program director positions. And then during the non-officer election years, it's our voting program directors, which is our leadership development director, legislative advocacy director, and our membership director.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. All right, let me go back to my Zoom so I can see. I know there were some other individuals who had their hands up.
Barb Quinn has her hand up.
Barb.
Would it be helpful to clarify that because there were no nominees or no intent to run letters submitted prior to the thirty-day requirement, all of those vacancies that we're talking about are now vacancies which will be filled by the board?
Thank you, Barb.
General session or?
No.
When?
When will those be able to be filled? So now those vacancies for the Board Development and Nominating Committee, they'll become vacancies that the board, the State Board of Directors has the ability to fill at a state board meeting? Should candidates, should individuals be nominated?
Okay, okay. So Jim, if they can apply or it's just somebody that's automatically going to be nominated?
Can I please ask that before you speak, you identify yourself and wait to be?
Carolyn.
Be recognized by the.
Thank you so much, Carolyn. Yes, just to be respectful for everyone on the call. Jim Skleen, Jim Skleen has his hand up?
Yes.
I, I just thought I could help clarify. I am on the BDNC committee or on that committee. We, we put forth the candidates on the slate for officers. Those officers are going to be voted on during the elections by everyone. The other candidates for the BDNC committee and those other positions, we just put forth recommendations to the board and then the general membership does not vote on those. The general, that gets passed on to the next board meeting. If that could help clarify it to people who are asking, the general membership's not going to be voting on those other positions during this election regardless.
Correct. Those are the non-voting board positions. Yeah, I think what Maddie was asking about was the Board Development and Nominating Committee positions that were vacant, right, that were not slated. Because they were not, the Board Development and Nominating Committee positions are typically voted on by the delegate body at convention, but if there are no candidates for the position, then that work, then those vacancies are turned over to the board to try to fill. Because the only time that we can elect them by the delegate body is at convention, so we still want to try to fill them and that turns over to, again, the State Board of Directors.
Got it. That, that makes sense. I was referring to the other unfilled positions too.
Right. Mary, is that Mary Sherard who has her hand up? It says Mary, so I'm guessing it's Mary Sherard, but it could be another Mary, so please let us know your full name. Okay, I don't know if we lost Mary. So does anyone have any questions regarding, that's, you know, right now we're on the bylaws. Does anyone have any questions regarding bylaws so that we can stay on task with the bylaws?
Hello?
Is that you, Mary?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Is this, is this the lovely Mary Sherard?
It is, and it says when I was trying to participate that I was, the host disabled the participant scream sharing, so I'm not sure if you guys saw me, but at least you can hear me. I want, I had a question and I wanted to go back to just the scholarship fund. I have not been as active as I had in years past. Why was the scholarship fund briefly eliminated and this to go to an endowment fund? Can somebody explain that briefly to me? Why did we stop the scholarship because it was such a wonderful program?
The scholarship program was a fantastic program, but unfortunately, the past several years, it hasn't been self-sufficient, self-funding sufficient. It used to be units or councils would purchase the awards or the various pins, et cetera, that would, that money would contribute to the scholarship and we just weren't getting the funds. It was, it wasn't self-sufficient any longer. In addition, plus the fact that we were having issues with, not issues, but very few students were actually applying for the scholarships.
So what's the difference between that and the endowment fund? What does that do? I'm sorry, I just need to be brought up to snuff.
The scholarship fund was, like I said, self-sufficient on all the donations, et cetera, and that could only be paid out to students who received the scholarship amounts that were awarded each year. The endowment fund, as I said, is more like an emergency savings account in simplest terms.
And where does that money come from?
From the interest, et cetera, that, that we get.
All right, so we are moving on from bylaws.
I've been muted and so I have a question about the endowment fund as a follow-up. How much is?
Dr. Gano?
How much is the, this is Dr. Lois Gano.
So just, if you can please wait until you, until you're identified. Thank you, Dr. Gano.
Thank you.
So we will hopefully, you know, the, let's, let's focus, this point is on the actual bylaws. So if you want to, we're going to get into budgets and financials. So when we get to that point and we have Alyssa, let's turn, then we can ask if you want to ask a question about what's in the endowment fund. This is specifically about the bylaw at this particular point. We don't have financials up in front of us and we don't have them up at that point. So if you are going to ask something about specific dollars, I would suggest you then send that as a request.
This, this was the follow-up to what Ms. Sherard was, was asking. And it had to do, her, her question was never answered. It's asked about the, where does that money come from?
So that, is that a point for, again, if we want to get into specifics of where, how it was started and things like that, we can get that information out to everybody. But I don't have answers for you on how much was it started with, how much is in there now, so. We send that as a follow-up question and then we can get that information looked up for you.
We were told to ask the questions today, so that's why I was asking the question. It was a follow-up.
So this, if we have a question about the specific bylaw, so. We also said if you have, if there are questions that you need answered, you don't, we won't have all of your questions today, be able to answer all of the questions if you're going to ask, if we have, you know, more detailed information that you're looking for. Angelica, do you have a question about the bylaws?
Yes, I do. I was just looking through them again. I noticed in one, Article twelve offices under Election Section Three, that you guys.
Sorry, I'm just going to ask Carolyn to scroll up for me.
Page seven.
Oops, right here?
Angie, repeat the article.
Article twelve offices under Election Section Three. The Secretary and Treasurer shall be eligible for three terms and the Vice President shall be eligible for two terms in the same office. Yes, that one.
Yes.
So I'm assuming those are consecutive terms and why does the Vice President need to be two terms in the same office instead of just one like we have it now? I can understand possibly the Secretary and Treasurer because of what they have to do. But the Vice President has to, when the Vice President's supposed to go to?
No, the Vice Presidents are currently two terms, Angelica.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of President-elect, don't mind me, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Yeah, the Vice Presidents are currently two terms. All we're doing is adding a third term for the, third term opportunity for the Secretary and Treasurer. So that was the only change there is just adding that third term.
Oh, but that's only for the Secretary and the Treasurer?
Correct.
And when is that taking effect? As of twenty twenty-one to twenty, you know what I mean? So in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year?
If, if these are adopted by the general membership, they would go in effect July one of twenty twenty-one, so it would be from twenty twenty-one on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
I apologize if I'm going to get anybody busy as I scroll really quick down to the next.
Exactly, yeah. Do you have any further questions regarding the bylaws themselves, the bylaw changes? Not the bylaws and not our entire bylaws, but these, the bylaw changes. All right, let's move on to our next area. All right, Alyssa Malloy, she is our current treasurer and she will present the proposed twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two budget and answer any questions.
All right, to start off, can you guys hear me? Because last time I spoke, I don't think my connection was right. Yes?
Yes. Can you make that any larger?
Alyssa, you can, you're, you're a little quiet, but you are, we can hear you, so thank you so much.
All right, so going back to Dr. Peace's point, has, have you guys seen this before or is this the first time you're seeing it? Can you just do an emoji for me? You could pick anyone, like you could do the heart, you could do the celebration, you could do the tears. Just show me if any of you have seen this document before tonight. Just show me if any of you have seen this document before tonight. All right, Kristen has thumbs up, I got Jim thumbs up, celebration, yeah, okay. Um, anybody else? So, okay, so, um, to Doc, uh, Dr. G's point, can you guys see the information well enough? Is it zoomed in well or do we need to zoom in more?
You need to zoom in more, that's too small, please.
Too small to read.
All right, and then this is the first time most of you guys are seeing it. So let's, let's start by like spending a few minutes just looking at it before I go into explanations. Okay, then, when, when everybody's done reviewing it, let's have either thumbs up or celebration or shocked emoji, anything you want to pick, just go for that. So that I could see, I, I have my participant list up so I could see when you guys are ready for me to talk about this stuff. So just take a glance, look at it and then we'll go over it in a second.
We need to be able to see the column titles. Thank you.
It'll be a little tricky because obviously as we scroll down, right? I mean, you're going to, in order to make it big enough for everybody to see, this is, and, and again, this is, this information is on our website. So after tonight, you'll obviously be able to still review back to it. Um, if you want to even bring it up on your own screen, you can bring it up on your own screen and, and, and put it big enough for you to see. But when she scrolls down, you're going to lose the header on the top.
So again, whenever you guys are ready, just start putting in the emojis. Um, any emotion would work, just so I know that you guys are ready for me to start highlighting the changes that we made this year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Oh, this is Chris, uh, Seacrist, I'm part of the.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, why did the membership dues, it looks like they dropped by almost half from, uh, last year to this year?
So the column that we're looking at, the one you're looking at is maybe the 71 compared to 175, is that correct? Is this the one we're looking at?
Uh, no, I was looking at the 71 compared to the 142.
Okay, so the numbers that you're looking at, those are actual numbers, right? So we had a pretty good year leading up to COVID and then COVID kicked our butt, just like it did everybody else's butt. So we ended up not getting as many, um, payments. So we actually, right now, looking through the units and we're trying to bring them up to good, not, not good sending, but at least not be delinquent. But what we're dealing with is we have a lot of units that had more than 200 or 300 numbers even. And they haven't paid any dues this year. So this year was really, really difficult because the schools weren't open in a lot of places. So the PTAs weren't able to collect the membership the way they used to be able to. So this is what we're looking at right now. It's, these numbers are as of, if I want to be accurate, this is February numbers. So this is how much we've collected up to the February.
All right, does everyone, is everyone, are we ready for her to give an overview? And then we can go to the questions. So potentially, when Alyssa does her overview, she'll be able to answer some of the questions. And then if we still have more questions, then we'll go from there. So Alyssa?
All right, so to very good point that Chris made. So we've had noticed a negative trend towards our membership. Year after year, we're getting fewer members. And this year was exceptionally bad because schools were closed. So next year, well, hopefully not going to be as bad. But we do expect that it's still going to be pretty bad. So as a result, we have lowered the expectations for how much we're going to get from the membership. And because of that, we had to adjust a lot of our expenses, knowing that we're not going to have the revenue that we have. We had put in some serious cuts that you will notice. So the first thing, probably the biggest thing, I'm seeing, Richard, is it really hard to hear me? Am I really quiet? Can you guys hear me well or? Yep, okay. Okay, the biggest cut that we probably have made is our office expenses. And you will notice that we had considered closing our offices because we're not able to meet all the expenses that the office requires. Except yesterday, we had found out, the good news is that the landlord had agreed to give us a big discount. And as a result, we're not going to be moving out of the office, but we're going to be able to have a rent at a much lower rate. So we're still keeping, it's going to be less than 7,500 that we budgeted for the rent. So we're able to keep, we don't have to move, this is the good news. And then the rest of it is going to be the bad news. So the big cut, the next big cut is the expenses that are allocated for the board. We had four board meetings that we used to meet in person. These are going to be cut down to one single meeting. And as a result of that, we're only going to have, we're planning on spending $8,500. Prior years, we had $23,000, $21,000 budgeted. And going forward, well, hopefully not going forward, but next year for sure, we're spending $8,500 on the board expenses. $3,100 of that expense is for us to have the software. And then we're going to also fund for one in-person meeting. So these are the big, big cuts that we have made for the expenses, knowing that our membership is not where it should be or where we had budgeted it previously, it hasn't been in years. So at this point, um, is there anything on the current proposed budget that you have any questions about that I could answer? You guys could raise your hand, you could just speak up.
Catherine has her hand raised.
Catherine?
Okay, can you give me a hand?
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I, uh, only, I want to ask the question, uh, the region, the region, the region expensive, I see for 2019, 20, 1,495 and then 20, I mean, 2019, 29,000 and I see a blank for 2021. And then 9,000, 20, 21, and then 20, 21, 22, 5,000. Explain the gap right here for the 2021.
So the, the blank that you're seeing should be a dash, that's like a formatting issue. Um, that means that we had no expenses submitted to us that are actual expenses. So no district had sent in money to be, as, they didn't ask for any money. So a lot of the annual meetings take place later in the year. So we had not had received any money up until February when these numbers are based off. So we had looked at the numbers as of February and we had not gotten any cash. So it should have been a dash, it's.
No.
Blank, but anyway, that, that's, that's the reason why you're not seeing any numbers. Now, the nine, the difference between the budgeted nine that has been historical amount versus the five that is going forward amount. We had noticed in the last six years, no one has claimed the money more than 5,000. So as a result, we had lowered the bar. And then also, you will see in the notes, it says that this was going to be a grant application.
Yeah, see.
Based, so the difference between, um, money just being allocated, what was going on previously? We were inflating our budget. And it wasn't based on real numbers. People weren't using the funds year after year after year and we're budgeting for those amounts. And so to adjust for that error just based on a actual expenses, that is what we did going for the following year. And it helped us because this is just a, this was adjusting things for accuracy, right? So we, we have real problem, we have a real problem of not raising the revenue with, through the membership. We just don't have the members anymore. And so we had to cut real expenses with the board meetings and with the office expenses. But this was just like a numbers thing. We were constantly booking more money into the budget than we were spending. So this was more of like aligning things to reality, less, um, trying to cut actual real expense.
Yeah, well, well, I'm, you're right on some of it because I understand in the 19 or 20, we did District 23 and I also, District 20 and also District 25 did use funds back then. I was been, been with the region when Vanessa was the region. So I know we used money back then. I just wanted to know the clarification. And then I see the 5,000 for the grant. I just want to get clarification on that. But we did submit money, it's just maybe something the rest of them did, I don't know, you know?
Did, did I answer your question though?
Yes, yes you did, yes you did, and I understand. I, I understand we, in the pandemic, I understand that we are, this is something we did not create it, we did not make. So we got to do the best we can, you know, so I understand we, we're, we're a lost membership, I understand all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
And I see Angelica again has a hand up?
Yes, yeah, it's Angelica Para.
Yes, I do. Hi, Alyssa.
Hey.
I do have questions, so like, kind of what Catherine was mentioning about in regards to the regions. So maybe I missed the answer on this, so this is one of, one of my questions, just so you know. Where it says grant application will replace existing allocation of expenses to regions. Does that mean that the regions have to apply for that money? And if they get it, they get it, if they don't, they don't, or how, explain that to me, please?
So Angelica, that's a really good question and it's really first come, first served, right? So we have $5,000 now. And again, year after year, we had not spent more than $2,000. We've been budgeting $9,000. So that $7,000 is a phantom money, like it wasn't even used up by anybody. So to your point where, when you're thinking like Catherine's district is going to need money and Dr. P's district is going to need money and Maloney's district is going to need money and I'm going to need money. At the end of the day, more than likely, you will all get the money. It's just that we're going to have a better record of it and we're not inflating our budget and we're not pretending like we have higher membership. Because our budget is based on making sure that we, our revenues equal our expenses. And so we keep like trying to balance things out. And so just going through the historical data and looking at the numbers where we could re, like, the hardest thing about deciding on the budget this year was to realize that we're not going to have, for at least like three years, we're not going to go back to regular numbers. Because this, this was a big, big dip that everybody had experienced and we just have to dig ourselves out of it. So going forward, just taking things out like in-person board meetings, taking out office expense, we have able to negotiate those expenses way, way down. And then looking at things that weren't even a real expense, we were able to do this with, um, the grants. So, long story short, first come, first served, most districts don't come to us to request those funds. We're going to end up having more than likely funds to serve the districts that come to us with a request.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, my next question is on the convention expense. I noticed at the top that you guys are not, are thinking of another virtual convention for next year. So why would we need $8,500 for convention for next year as an expense, not an income?
That's a good point. Uh, so the virtual convention usually is a zero out, like it comes in and comes out. And so if we're going to say that we're going to bring $8,500, we're going to say that we're going to spend $8,500. That's how we usually work in the budget. So that's my understanding of it. I, I just saw Kristen, did, did I clearly state that or was, was that a misstatement? I apologize.
That is correct, you know, typical, exactly what we bring in, what we spend, what we put in for our revenues is what we put in for expenses. So, um, you know, there still is cost for the virtual convention, um, you know, that we incur. We were doing swag boxes this year, right? So there's an expense for the box, there's an expense for the shipping, right? Of, of that product, there's shirts that we had to purchase that, that are going into that box. Um, there's a platform, you know, you know, whether or not like we have to, possibly would have had to have associate voting um, do our, um, election, there's a cost for that. So we had to factor all of that into, um, what we, we will be.
I'm so sorry, there's a literal alarm going off of in my house, so I guess I have to leave. I am very sorry, this is really random. I have no idea what's going on.
Oh my goodness, Alyssa, I hope you're, I hope everything's okay at your house. So we, we will be live in person, um, some of us in a room to do the general sessions. So there was space rental, et cetera. So there's still costs that we are incurring, even though it's virtual, it's a lot less. Um, but again, is whatever we are showing as the expense is what we're showing, we would bring in as income as well.
Okay, and one other question, I think this is the last one I have, Kristen.
Okay, and then, and then if you do have more, we're going to go to somebody else because there are other people with their hands up, if that's okay?
I get mine, yeah, this is the last one I have. We have spotlight, $2,500, why, are we thinking of having a, uh, in-person next year? Or is that, are we having a virtual? Because I mean, if we have a virtual, there really shouldn't be too much expenses based upon the way I saw it done.
No, we are, we are, we are, we've already been in communication with Milliken and we're prizing, ready to go back in person if the state, the state of Illinois is, is able to do so. Carolyn, do you want to speak to that?
Angie, we couldn't be more excited for the fact that we're going to be able to, at this point, um, look forward to bringing the children back into, back together to celebrate their art um, and provide workshops and opportunity for those families to, um, celebrate their children. So yes, our plan is to be back at Milliken in 2022. In fact, I received an email from them earlier this week saying how excited they were to hear that we were planning to be back in person next, next year and that they would be, you know, they're looking forward to continuing that partnership that they, we have developed with them over the last eight years.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Matthew Rodriguez, you've been patiently awaiting with your hand up.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to know, I know Alyssa had to leave, but do you know if we applied for the PPP loan at all?
Yes, we have and we received the PPP. That, if you look in our sponsorships numbers, sponsorship and grants on the top, that you see those actuals, that's a factor in there.
Is that the miscellaneous income?
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe it is in our miscellaneous, not in our sponsorships. Sorry, thank you, Matt. We're getting in the wrong place.
Copy that, thank you.
Actual, sorry.
Um, Kristen, this is Carolyn.
Yes.
Just, I'll just add to that, we have actually done both draws on that, Matthew.
Yep, so we had one from last year as well.
Yeah, that's, um, we, 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 yeah, we received one last year and then we also received the one that was available in December.
Cool, copy, thank you.
Absolutely. Jim Sclina has his hand up.
Um, so I guess a, a couple of questions, that spotlight's going to happen next April or May, right?
Yes, correct. Spotlight is, um, we have it scheduled, we were trying to have it every year, the same Sunday, this first Sunday in May, is that correct, Carolyn?
That is correct.
So then, uh, convention next year is scheduled for what, the end of April or about the same time, right?
We do not have a set date yet for convention.
Okay.
Right, so that is, um, we make a recommendation, um, the convention site committee makes a recommendation. We have held off on that discussion, obviously wanted to. on that discussion. Obviously, we wanted to see how the how we did with our virtual platform, you know, the virtual format. Um, you know, see where things were going with the state and obviously see how, you know, funding wise, the budget wise, and and we'll be looking at that.
I I I guess where I'm going with this is the question that um you know, before she had to go away, the the current treasurer said that it's basically a budgeting tool for putting in here eighty-five hundred dollars in for convention, eighty-five hundred dollars out next year for a virtual convention. The same exact thing could be accomplished by putting in those twenty 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 twenty-one numbers for an actual in-person convention of eighteen thousand in and eighteen thousand out. So this budget that you ever that's being put forth here, what what's the rationale or reasoning behind having the spotlight in person? But yet planning a year and some away for another virtual convention. And the reason I bring this up is because I think that another virtual convention that far out is certainly within the realm of possibilities. And should pro in in my opinion, should probably be in the budget that way. I'm guessing I I'm asking, what's the rationale behind, you know, having an in-person spotlight? But yet planning for a a virtual convention a year away?
So um Kristen, if you want, I will jump into that. Um, part of the expense that you don't see that you look at convention expense, but when we have an in-person convention expense, that's also two board meetings um that we are we don't have the funds to budget for. Being realistic in where we are revenue-wise. And that would be expenses that would be then moved into the board and executive committee meeting um line, which we have eliminated for next year. So when you're talking an in-person convention, yes, for the delegates, for the actual convention process. We could change that to eighteen and eighteen, but then we're also going to need to raise the board and executive committee meeting numbers um also, which we don't have the funds to do at this time.
Does that help answer your question, Jim?
That that makes sense. So the the true cost of the convention doesn't include the the first line item under organizational expenses, that board and executive committee meetings. A big portion of that would have to be added back in. So that's that's the rationale for putting it in as a
Virtual, right. So so the obviously then all the board is in it. It comes to the in-person convention. And there's a lot more expenses that are added into that as well.
Yeah, no, that that makes sense. That's something I didn't know. And I'm that makes me sad. Um, and I think that's that will hurt our numbers further down the road. Um, so I'm hoping for some very gracious, really rich donor.
Well, our hope is, you know, too, is that as we continue to grow back, right, and grow back, grow back our membership, grow back um funds into the budget that we can bring those back, right? And and as people are more um inclined to to meet back in person too as well. So did you have any other questions, Jim, before we move? I thought you said you had two questions. Maybe I was wrong.
No, it was kind of the the same thing in conjunction, you know, why are we planning for having a spotlight but not having a convention? So you guys answered all my questions and you and that makes sense. Like I said, it's unfortunate, but you've answered everything I was looking for.
Thank you. All right, Chris.
Yeah, hi, this is Chris from the Bowen PTA. Uh, yeah, I just had a couple of questions, like, would this be the place where the endowment fund would be shown?
No, because this is we don't budget to put money into the endowment fund.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. Like, you're not gonna like, if we have questions about like how much money is in the endowment fund, that that's gonna be a question you need to send. Um, you know, we can take note of it, or if there's something specific. Um, you know, but the endowment fund has been long established, you know, as I had deferred to our past presidents. It's been something that we've had since nineteen eighty. It wasn't a change to the bylaws by any means. There was nothing changing about the endowment fund. If if you want to know how much is in it, I do believe it may be in and correct me if I'm wrong, it it will be noted in our audit um that. Uh, but if you have a question about that, you can, like I said, we'll put a note on that one. And then if you have something to do, just, you know, in after the meeting, you can message to info at illinois.org. So. But we don't budget put money into the endowment fund, and we don't budget to take money out of the endowment fund.
Yeah, it's not on this. It's this is a revenue and expense statement. So the uh the interest income I see was like twenty nineteen twenty twenty was ten thousand. And then after that, it goes, it's goes blank. So if we were getting ten thousand interest in twenty nineteen twenty twenty, how how did that go to zero?
Something must be off in those lines. We're not getting that much in interest.
Okay, uh, yeah, it's because if you were getting that much in interest, then
That'd be great, right?
Yeah, yeah, then we could live off.
That would be fantastic.
That's all right. Yeah, that was my question. What was that? Why did that go blank?
Kristen, I made a note of that, and we'll follow up with the office and find out.
Yes.
And with Alyssa and find out. Yeah, something's not right there.
Yep. Thank you for pointing that out. It takes a lot of, you know, it takes many eyes to look at some of these things, Chris. So sometimes something goes goes awry.
Oh, yeah, you just noticed something. I just noticed something, and maybe some somebody else doesn't notice.
Yep, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, I think I saw Dr. P. With her hand up.
Yes, yes, you did, Madam President. Uh, okay, so I don't know if I'm following correctly. But in response to the gentleman who spoke before Chris was
Jim?
Yes, as he raised some interesting points. And so I'm looking at convention expense. Um, so I wanted to say I I uh have a very positive uh attitude and uh and and um outlook on having uh virtual conventions. If they're done well, I have I've been in activities where you get more people than you generally do. Um, and I can I don't see any reason why that can't be true for us. Uh, especially, you know, if we do some proactive planning and creative incentives and those kinds of things. Um, so that was one comment I wanted to make. The second was, I think I may have misunderstood. I think I I understood there being an increase, you know, in in planning for uh convention that there I thought I heard something to the music of there would be a a need for um an increased number of board meetings for planning. And again, with virtual meetings, I I just don't I don't see where that hurts us financially. I see that more as a help.
Dr. P, that's not that's wasn't what Carolyn was saying. Um, so we don't, it's not, we do all our planning meetings in in virtually. Um, aside from a site visit, what she was saying is that we have to bring the board to the meet to, you know, to conventions. We have to pay for all of their expenses to be at convention. And then that's where we have our board meetings. So we are not budgeting to have in-person, other than one in-person board meeting next year. So that it would increase those board expenses to have to hold those board meetings in person instead of being virtual.
Madam President, I'm back, by the way.
Clarify that.
Okay, now let me make sure I'm I understood you, Madam President. Um, so you're saying that you're going to just have one in-person board meeting to make for a better budget arrangement in in light of our COVID decline? Is that correct? And that's the other meetings will be virtual?
That is correct, Dr. P.
Okay.
I've I've I made it back. They turned. Hi, guys.
Hi, okay, it sounds like everything is okay, Alicia.
Totally fine. Somebody was making burgers, but it wasn't doing it right. So we're all good. We're all good.
Great. So, okay, so uh uh Pres Kristen clarified that I was understanding that part well. And then so and then and then the eighty-five hundred is just gonna be what is projected for the eh uh virtual convention for next year as well. Am I understanding that too correctly?
Yes.
Income and expense. So Alyssa, I'll hand it back over to you. I just I didn't know if you heard the entire question that she had asked.
Yeah, I I I just like realized that our eighty-five hundred dollars are overlapping. So you're looking at the eighty-five hundred dollars for the convention and eighty-five hundred dollars for the board leadership meetings. It just so happens that they're the same number. They're um they're not related. They're just happen to be the same number. So the eighty-five hundred for the convention, you are correct, Dr. P, we're gonna expect that much revenue, which is extremely optimistic. And but again, to the point I made earlier before the alarm is that it's a break even event. So we we know, we once we realize what our revenues are, we try to give the expenses to the minimum to match the revenue. So it's once the numbers come out for this year, you will see what the actual numbers are. And it's going to be much more easier to have the conversation going forward, what it really costs.
Okay, thank you. I just want to close on the high note of of really, it's on us. We can make um the virtual either a a roaring success because it does accommodate so many circumstances that make it much more convenient.
I agree.
For the stretch across the state to be able to enjoy and participate without driving and dinging and all those things. So I uh I challenge us to to um make lemonade out of this.
I really like that. That is a really, really good point. Dr. G has her hand up.
Yes, I've had my hand up.
Can I just, can I just, I want to give everybody an idea of time. So it is seven fifty-four. Um, so I just I just want to let, you know, so if we have some really good questions, I just want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity.
I do have a question. I've had my hand up for quite some time.
Yeah, I wasn't I wasn't saying you didn't. I was just giving everybody an idea as to what time it was.
Yes, I understand. Um, and so my question had to do with the interest income. So I wanted to thank Mr. Seacrest for bringing up that uh point about the uh drop in the notification on the budget of the interest income. And President Kristen, you said that you would notify us about the endowment and how much is in there and what the income is. How will we be notified and when can we expect that?
I you know what, uh, Dr. G, I don't have an answer for you on that. So and Alyssa, you missed the part on the interest income. We believe there's a maybe there's an error in there.
So I will take a look at it. I will find out what the answer is. The best way to contact you is the information we have for you on Member Hub. Is that correct? Your email?
Yes.
Okay, and then you mentioned Mister, so Chris, were you also interested in getting that answer? And Jim?
Yeah, I asked the question about the interest.
So Dr. G, Chris, and Jim, I will look into it, and I'll send you an email after this meeting to let you know what is going on with those numbers.
Okay, and and what the endowment uh face value of the endowment is. Thank you.
That information just be sent to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
All right, everybody who's on this call could get it, or we could post it. Sounds good.
I do believe it may be part of our audit, Alyssa, in which case it would be on the everyone would have already access to it. So.
We'll just make it easy easily accessible.
Thank you, Treasurer Alicia.
You're welcome, Dr. G.
All right, I thought Mary Sherard had a hand, maybe had a hand up again. Mary?
I I'm not sure why I can't talk.
Oh, oh, we had, we heard you for a minute.
We're hearing you, Mary. Oh, we lost you again, Mary. Mary, you unmuted, but you went back on mute.
Um, hello?
Yep, we hear you, Mary.
I I'm not sure what's going on, but I don't even see my picture coming up. But that's okay, because my hair ain't done anyway. All right? Now, let's I have three questions. How many regions are sharing this five thousand dollars?
That's for all of the regions?
How many are there?
There's ten.
Okay, all right. Uh, my next question is um, so we said that the the convention uh next year may be virtual, but I also see that there's four thousand dollars for the national convention delegates. And that's four thousand dollars. Are we saying the national is going to be virtual as well? Because that's half of, I don't know what they do for us for four thousand dollars if it's gonna be virtual. I understand what you said the eighty-five hundred for, but it's four thousand dollars for, are they virtual?
We won't know if national is virtual until probably in twenty twenty-two. Their plan is to be in person again next year. Their plan was to be in person this year until, and Matthew can answer that question when they when they made the decision. But maybe it was February that they decided to go on virtual. You know, their plan last year was to be, it was gonna be in Grapevine, Texas this summer, in June. And they went virtual. I believe it was in February. They made the January or February, they made the decision to go virtual. So right now, we have, we're planning again for them. I think it's in Maryland next year um for the national convention. And that's, you know, we always budget money for members of the board to attend the national convention. So obviously, if it's in virtual in Maryland, it allows for more opportunity. Um, we don't, you know, this year we had the budgeted money, right? But because we don't have the actual income, we won't be spending the money because we don't have the money to spend.
Okay, all right. And how how many delegates do we send to the national?
Carolyn, do you have the board policy?
The current board policy allows for the president, the president-elect, and then any other board member who submits prior to submits their own registration, early bird registration to national. Once that is, once that is done, it it could be the entire board. Whatever funds are left over after the net, after the president and the vice and the president-elect have been covered will be divided equally among the board members. So there isn't a set number, Mary. Um, it depends on who wants to go.
Okay, but too definite for sure.
The president and the president-elect are budgeted, are clearly budgeted for, and then whatever funds are left over. Because, you know, when it was when it was gonna, when it was going to be in Louisville, that was a real easy drive. There wasn't a lot of expenses for a lot more board. So once the president and the president-elect by the way, we can see you again. Your hair looks fine. Once the president and the president-elect expenses are paid for, whatever is left to be divided equally among the board.
Okay, one one Okay, one real last question, what is that? We talk about the decrease in membership, and I know it's because of COVID and everything else that has been stated. But uh it I'm concerned about the membership promotion. Uh, I know back in twenty nineteen twenty twenty, it was five thousand dollars. Now it's down to a thousand, and we're trying to pump up membership. Is that really enough? I know we're under budget restraints, but is that really enough to get membership? Because I know that that takes a lot of work, always have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Is that enough money? That was my question.
Alyssa? Alyssa looked at historicals. Again, a lot of this is, you know, what Alyssa's Alyssa's done as treasurer is looked at historical trends.
Exactly.
Alyssa?
Yeah, that that's a really good point, Kristen. So exactly, we built our budget just looking at what we had spent historically. And what we had spent was less than two thousand dollars. And as a matter of fact, the money that we had spent hasn't really generated any return. So for instance, last year, when we had gift certificates to pump up the the units. If you look at the units that won the membership, were the units that originally always had the most membership. So if you really look at the numbers, you realize that sometimes when you do the gift certificates, that is not an effective program. So the beauty of like this year, it really highlighted things. We were able to look at the historic trends. We could see We were able to look at the historic trends. We could see which units were their amounts. Throwing money in membership historically, again, we had not spent the money. So since the money wasn't spent, it wasn't budgeted for the future year. Uh, all the, most, most, most of the expenses that you see that have been cut down, they are basically us looking at the actual numbers from the previous year and matching it to seeing what we're seeing. So let's see, for the membership expense, you could see that we spent five hundred fifty-four dollars. And then this year, we spent zero dollars. So even budgeting two thousand dollars is kind of being optimistic.
Madam President, I, I have my hand up. Am I next? I'd like to piggyback on that.
I was waiting for Alyssa to finish, so.
I'm all set.
Okay, Dr. Palmer?
Okay, so, uh, I would like to speak to that because I know that, um, uh, Mary Sherard is a strong, uh, um, what, uh, a strong, uh, uh, energy for engagement and increased membership, and, and so am I and a few others. And so we may have had a thousand dollars, and we may have used it as we used it, but did, but misused it. That you didn't, uh, the certificates aren't, aren't what motivates. That is, that wasn't the need. So that's something that needs to be discussed. I had hoped to have had an opportunity to sit, to sit with the membership director, uh, at, in that I was, uh, leadership, membership chair for District Twenty-Five. That opportunity didn't yet present itself. Hopefully it will. Um, but no, certificates are not going to, alone, are not going to get the J O B done. It takes a lot of energy, a lot of creative, uh, hands-on engagement and involvement, uh, to grow membership and to increase engagement. And a thousand dollars ain't gonna get her done.
So I appreciate.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. And you know what I would say, what I would highly recommend, Dr. Palmer, if you have some great ideas, please send them to our membership director.
Oh, girl, stop it. You know exactly what my idea is. I, that's why ours is growing. You know exactly what we've been doing, girl. You've been helping us. What you talking about? You know exactly how we're doing this. You were there.
I, I don't have your plan for this year, so please, please send, please send, please send your ideas.
You know you got it. You've been having it ever since I got my P, uh, Illinois PTA University PhD. It's the same one. If it ain't broke, I don't fix it.
Well, please send it to Kristen.
I sent it to.
The other, the other Kristen, that is, so. All right, so thank you. Thank you, Dr. Palmer.
Have a reach out to me.
Are there any other questions regarding the budget tonight? It's eight oh five, so I want to respect everybody's time this evening. So is there any further questions regarding the budget? All right, so seeing none, I want to thank Alyssa for preparing the budget and doing her overview and answering everyone's questions. All right, so our last, um, area of discussion is, um, submissions for motions, of motions for legislative action. Um, we, as we discussed earlier, we have two resolutions that will be, um, brought forward, um, for adoption, potential adoption at the convention. Um, if you are interested in any bills that are currently, um, in, uh, in the House or in the Senate and would like us to open up the legislative, um, platform, please send a motion form, and we will make those available to you, um, to Connie McElie by the twenty-first. Is that right, Connie?
Yes.
Was it six P M? Looking at mine.
Yeah, it was six P M.
So that will be the motions to, um, open the legislative platform and any calls to actions that you would like us to take um, to support the resolutions, uh, or, I'm sorry, legislation, excuse me. Barb Quinn, you have your hand up?
Are, are we gonna, um, walk people through how to write those motions? If it's a, if it's a motion to implement the platform? I, I don't think we can open the platform because no, uh, changes were pre-submitted. So I think we're only talking about implementation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. So if you need assistance with, with no, um, the language of writing the motion, um, please contact info@illinoispta.org or Carolyn McCarty, C. McCarty, at, at illinoispta.org on language regarding the legislation. And then if you know, if you have a motion that you'd like to submit regarding, you can send it right to Connie Ma, uh, to Connie at C M C E L Y E A at illinoispta.org. Peg has her hand up, so she's probably has something to add that I missed regarding.
I think you missed, I just wanted, um, add something for clarification. There will be an email sent out to all of the delegates as a convention countdown, and it will, in fact, state the fact that we will be opening the implement, we're gonna implement the platform. Thank you, Barb.
Sorry, implement.
Implement the platform, and there will be a link to our platform for everyone included as well as an example motion. And then, uh, the motion form attached. Barb, does that help?
May. May I respond?
Yes, please. No, he's just finding it instead of you.
That, Peg, that's exactly what I was asking for. So the people have, um, a, a sample of how to write the motion to implement the platform.
Well. Barb, sometimes we think alike, isn't it, right?
Scary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Why did I lose my screen? Okay. So I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I'm looking forward to it. Being back with you all next Thursday at six P M for the convention launch. Now, the Zoom meeting room will open at five forty-five to give everyone an opportunity to address any technical issues, right? Test your sound, get your, um, you know, your hand raised things, uh, all ready to go, so you'll be ready to, uh, to launch our convention. Um, you should have, we've been sending out your itinerary, so if you have, if you are registered for a convention, your itinerary should be hitting your inbox, right? That will have your links um, to the general session meetings and to your workshops that you pre-selected. Note that those, those links are personal to you, all right? So, um, if you shared it with somebody else, um, only one of you are gonna be able to use it. So it's a specific, um, link to one individual. Um, so, uh, make sure you check for that in your inbox, right? Um, again, as, um, Peg said, motion forms are gonna be available in an email that will be sent to voting delegates. Um, and if there's anyone that wants to stay on and wants to, um, see where the, um, business items are located on the website, uh, we will do a walkthrough, um, in just a few minutes, but if you are not, if you don't want to stay on, if you know where to find things, or you're comfortable with, um, with the, uh, information that we stated early, please feel free to to go take care of anything, put your kids to bed, take the dog out, anything that you need to address at this time. So again, thank you to everyone for coming. Thank you to Connie, to Carolyn, to Peg, to um, Alyssa, um, anyone, and anyone I missed, um, for all their hard work in putting together the convention. Jolene, of course, our executive director. Um, it's been a, it's been a lot of work, uh, to we've been doing things a lot differently and learning how to do them along the way, and thank you to all of our board members that, um, were in attendance tonight. It's great to see everyone. Yeah, wish it was in person. Uh, and we look forward to seeing you next week. Prepare to launch.
Countdown to launch.
Countdown to launch. Absolutely.
Okay, I'm getting there. Just give me a second. I gotta open it up.
Really like to see everyone's faces like in person, you know? I mean, it'd be so great. We went to visit this, we went to visit NIU yesterday, Peg and I, just to see the, you know, where we'll be operating out of, and it would be so nice to have everybody there.
Okay, everyone, here, here is our website. If you sign on to illinoispta.org, this is your landing page. And you can see we're promoting our, um, Convention Twenty-One. Um, but across the top, we have about donate, leadership resources, programs, advocacy, and events, um, membership luggage shop. Under the event, you'll, if you hover over it, you'll see Convention Twenty-Twenty-One. We're gonna go and click on that, and I'm using two computers tonight, so um, I'm turning back and forth here, so let's see if I can get that to. Okay, so, once you click on it, if you scroll down, you'll see there's the information regarding it. To the right-hand side of your screen, right here, is our, um, agenda, is our, um, index, our table of contents. What we were look, talking about earlier as far as all the action items, all action items are viewed in General Session One Agenda or under General Session Two Agenda. So I'll just, oh, click on, open up one of these for you. And as you can see, um, there's the parliamentary, um, procedures we went over this evening with Anna. And by clicking on any one of these, it will open up that document for you. Okay? And I'm trying to figure out how I get back now because I've got some other things in front of me. There we go. Um, same goes for the rules, the audit report, and I'm gonna open up the audit report real quick because we were talking about the endowment, and I'm not sure that it is actually on this document. It, yes, it is. It's right, it's the investments right here, where you can see the number is ninety-five-nine-sixteen. So that was a question that was brought up. So yes, it is in the audit. It can be followed there. The other reports, our proposed budget is here, where you can open it up and look at that. The Board Nominating, um, Board Development and Nominating Committee Report. The election procedures that we discussed this evening that, um, were more to do with if we had a contested election, which we do not. If you want more information about the candidates, there is a section down here, down below, that says Illinois PTA Candidates. If you open that up, you and scroll down, you'll see there's, there's Greg's face smiling at us, and Connie and Alyssa, and Peg. And there's Jim, who's running from the floor, having given his thirty-day notice. We continue, and there's Kristen, who is running for BDNC, our Board Development Nominating Committee. So we will, um, close out Agenda One. We go into Agenda Two or, um, General Session Two Agenda, and here you will be able to read the President's Report. And those pages and pages and pages of the bylaw changes. You will also be able to read the two resolutions in full. And then the fun stuff, all the awards and our award winners. So we have some membership awards. Even during a pandemic, we have, um, several schools, um, several PTAs that were that met last year's numbers or were higher than last year's numbers. So, um, we definitely want to recognize those that really went the, um, went, took the ex, you know, went that extra step in order to make sure they continued their PTA activity through a pandemic. Okay, let me get back. And our outstanding award winners that we will be celebrating are outstanding administrator, outstanding volunteer, and our outstanding teacher. Does any, I can't, now I can't see if anybody raises their hands or anything when, because when I'm doing both of these, so um, if somebody's got their hand up, just go ahead and unmute yourself and speak up.
Angelica does.
Oh, Angie.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I can't see when I got this both going this way.
Oh, no, that's fine. So going back to the audit, so that investments section, that's all the endowment fund?
That is the endowment fund.
Okay, so I'm assuming we lost money on it because of the, uh, investment itself?
It is an investment account, and yes, last year, um, very few people could say that they didn't lose something through investments last year.
Okay, so now I know that that's all, that's only endowment fund. Okay, thank you.
That is the endowment fund, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions?
Nobody else has their hand raised.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim, for, and our Vanna White.
Yes. Okay, um, you all saw, got to sit and look at the side of my face while I looked at one screen, so I will look at you, and I'll say thank you again for joining us tonight. Um, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to, um, reach out, um, send your questions to info@illinoispta or directly to, if it's regarding resolutions or legislation, to me at C M C C. Make sure you put both, all those Cs in there. So it's C M C C A R T Y at illinoispta.org. If it's regarding the bylaws, please reach out to Connie. And I see that there's only six of us left on this call, so you all know how to get code to Connie if you need to. Um, and if it's about BDNC or a question regarding that, you can reach out to, um, Connie on that also. And Budget, Alyssa, will be more than happy to answer them, and she'll be getting more information out to you guys regarding the questions you had during the call. So, having said that, Kristen, do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you, Carolyn, for doing that little virtual tour of the website. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
This is, then this is actually your program book. Um, we said it was virtual. This is your actual program book. So this is the information, like it's all put together, um, there. So this is what you'll utilize for the, for, for the convention.
Okay, I'm good. Good night, everyone. Thanks for staying with us. Dr. P, Larry.
Good night, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
Oh, there's Dr. G. Oh, now I see Barb. I, I don't know why. I could only see a few of you.
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch more people on, so.
I didn't realize.
You see a few. There's, there's still quite a few. All right, ladies, have a lovely evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sweet.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.